We are. Mics are on and I'm gabbling us in at 9:04 a.m. At this time, I'd like to welcome everybody and I'm going to be calling for the invocation shortly, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flags. And if you would please rise, if you have a hat, remove it. Rise for the invocation by Deacon Michael Mance of the Corpus Christi Cathedral.
Thank you Judge. Bow your heads and pray for God's blessing. Almighty and ever-living God, we give you thanks for the many blessings in our lives. We thank you for our families, our friends, and our ability to live and worship in a free country. Father, we ask that you bless the members of the Commissioners' Court. Give them wisdom, understanding, and courage to make honest and just decisions for all of the people of the Oasis County. And we ask this in your name, amen.
Commissioner?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you so much and thank you Deacon for coming this morning and starting our day off right. At this time, I'm going to, for the clerk's record, announce that today is August 7th, 2019. Seems like we were just here. Oh, we were. And we, of course, are at the Oasis County Courthouse, 3rd floor, 901 Leopard. And I do certify that all Commissioners are present and therefore we do have a quorum. And I'll call for the safety briefing at this time and Timothy.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Judge.
Good morning, Tim.
Everyone. Today, we're meeting in the 3rd floor at the Oasis County Courthouse located here at 901 Leopard Street. The restrooms are located immediately to your right-hand side on the 3rd floor atrium. Fire extinguishers located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five extinguishers located throughout the 3rd floor atrium immediately outside. An AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom adjacent to the Human Resource Offices. Participants responsible for dialing the 911 in the event of emergency are Edward. Currently, participants who will be assigned and are CPR certified are Margaret Mead and Officer Vasquez. In case of an evacuation, thegress route will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom. Proceed out the double doors located on La Pan Street on the courthouse and muster across the street parking lot. In case the need for shelter in place, will remain in the building and await further instructions from the Oasis County Sheriff's Office. Our shared safety topics are active shooter training for all Oasis County employees. That concludes my safety brief.
Thank you. And I know that you have sent kind of an everyone email out regarding that active shooter training. And I just want all those that are listening to please make certain that you read that bulletin carefully and that we encourage your attendance. I think you've given them options as a matter of fact.
Yes ma'am, there are four separate classes on two separate days, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. That way, there's no disruption to continuity of government.
Right. And we're working towards also a safety luncheon protocol and I'm very excited about that. I mean, hopefully, we'll do those quarterly. But obviously, with world events, this is really important. You know, it reminds me of, I was traveling this weekend and you know, you get on the airplane and they give you all the safety, just like you always gave, you just gave your safety briefing. And yet, sometimes we're distracted or we're not really paying attention to everything. And I think that the information that you're giving here at the beginning is absolutely vital. Who's designated to call 911? Who's designated to be CPR? Where a defibrillator is? You know, I think we should also now know who is Stop the Bleed certified or who has been trained in Stop the Bleed. I think Kathy has been, Edward has been. So I want us to make sure that we're actually listening because God forbid, we need that information. You don't want to be asking questions. You should have it memorized and know it by heart. So anyway, thanks for giving it and we'll look forward to those training sessions.
Yes ma'am.
At this time, I'm going to ask for approving of the minutes. We have several to approve that have been provided to you in your booklets from July 24th, 26th, and 31st. If it's all right, loud and clear, may I take all of them at once? I'll take a motion, please, to approve those three sets of minutes as I just listed.
So moved.
I think I heard a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. At this time, I have a resolution and it is a wonderful one. It's from Solomon, it's in regards to the Solomon Coles Alumni Reunion. And because Tyner is out, I think Ms. Margaret is going to read for us. And I believe, oh yes, I was going to say, I think Dr. Scott. Well, would you like us to wait? We can, we can, absolutely Margaret. Oh, wait a second. Okay. That's what we call timing. That was, you do not have to worry, that's perfect timing. And let's let Margaret Mead go ahead and start us off with the resolution and then we'll recognize you. Welcome ma'am.
Whereas Solomon M. Coles High School 32nd Alumni Reunion will be held August 7th through August 10th. Whereas Solomon M. Coles alumni will gather for a meet and greet to start off the reunion weekend on Thursday, August 7th, 2019, at the Holiday Inn Airport. Whereas Solomon M. Ortiz alumni from all over the country meet for this reunion every two years in Corpus Christi, Texas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oasis County Commissioners' Court does hereby recognize the Solomon M. Coles Alumni Reunion to be August 7th through August 10th, 2019.
So moved.
Hearing a motion and a second, at this time, I'll call for discussion and welcome Dr. Scott. And would you introduce your guest to us?
Yes.
And just approach the mic only because we're on video this morning. Just give us your name and the organization and...
Okay. Good morning Judge.
Good morning.
People assembled. I am Janie Wilson Harris. I am the Vice Chair of the Solomon M. Coles Alumni Association. I'm sorry. I'm trying to catch my breath.
Don't worry. You must have taken the stairs.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
Gone to the wrong building.
Oh.
Anyways, I'd just like to say thank you for this privilege, this honor of receiving Bear County proclamation for our organization. It's heartwarming and it shows that the city of Corpus Christi is, you know, recognizes our association and our alumni. I am a 1967 graduate of Solomon M. Coles. I was in the last graduating class before they closed it as a junior senior high school. But we are so happy that the name continues on. Thank you.
That's so great. And you're from San Antonio?
Yes.
I mean, you hail, I'm sorry.
Originally from Corpus.
I'm sorry, but you live in San Antonio right now?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, forgive me. Well, that's wonderful. Well, we're very proud to be able to share in the history that is Solomon Coles. And we're grateful that there are so many locals and people who lived here and went to school here and then moved away that it kept on that rich tradition. And I think it's one fantastic. So of course, we're always grateful to Dr. Scott. She keeps, she keeps all history alive here and she's got something here for us.
Yes, we have for you and I will leave this.
Okay.
It is the program book for this week and it reads Solomon Melvin Coles 32nd Honor Banquet, Mighty Mighty Hornets Buzzing Backward While Moving Forward. And it is going to be Friday and you are certainly invited as a special guest. I think your people all know about this to bring a welcome.
That's great.
And so at our invitation as a special guest.
Thank you, thank you. Very exciting. I really appreciate you being here and like I said, we just, we love hearing about our history here in Oasis County. So thanks for being part of it.
Picture if that's okay.
Absolutely, we'd love a picture.
I think it's easier, we'll come to you there.
So moved. Vote. Want to vote first real quick?
Let's vote, yeah.
Second, third?
No, we have a motion in a second.
I know.
And all those in favor of passing the resolution signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. The resolution is passed.
Solomon Coles is in whose district?
Carolyn.
It's, no, Ms. Carolyn, I thought, come on, you're in your district, please.
Oh.
Yeah, come on.
It's a Ms. Bond's precinct.
Thanks again, have a wonderful reunion. I just had my 35th high school reunion and I missed it and I got into big trouble. I said, but I don't need to go, I see everybody every day.
Yes.
I see Tyner every day.
Set it up?
Yep.
Fifty-second, wow.
Good luck.
And Edward, if you wouldn't mind, oh, he's already on his way. And thank you again for coming from San Antonio. Now you can go enjoy our wonderful seafood. I have one registered public comment and that's from Mr. Michael Carlisle and I'd ask if he'd come to the podium and, and just as a reminder in public comment, as you know, you get to speak and we get to listen.
This is all? I'm Michael Carlisle, I'm with the Texas Tropical Trail Regional Board and I was asked by our Chair who also shared this letter at the Texas Historical Commission Quarterly Meeting back in Paris, Texas. And it's about the courthouse and I'll just read part of it for you. Dear Oasis County Commissioners, keenly aware of the economic impact and historical importance that courthouse restoration and repurposing can create, the Texas Tropical Trail Regional Board wishes to express our enthusiastic support of the restoration of the 1914 Oasis County Courthouse. The 1914 courthouse will anchor the Corpus Christi heritage that surrounds it, museums, attractions, activities, a vibrant downtown, and a storied history would all be enhanced by this Texas landmark. The Texas Tropical Trail Region Board embraces the renewed interest in this valuable part of Oasis County heritage and stands with those determined to save, restore, and repurpose the 1914 Oasis County Courthouse. We look forward to touring a restored 1914 Oasis County courthouse in the future. Sincerely, the Texas Tropical Trail Region Board of Directors.
Wow, that's fantastic. I really appreciate that and I wasn't expecting this. So this is wonderful. I'm going to plan to send a copy to the Texas Historical Commission, Ms. Fleming, and I know that this will be welcome for her as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I forgot I'm not supposed to say anything, sorry. But the good news for me is that I already signed up on public comment. Okay, my public comment that I have is this incredible poster that you're going to see around and if the video, don't get me, just get the poster. And Commissioners, once a year, it's my understanding that we have historically had an employee appreciation event. This is wonderful. I believe last year it was barbecue from Bill Miller, I think that's, and it was held in April. We were in the middle of the legislative session and it just really wasn't an opportune time. And so we've taken the liberty of creating an amazing event. There's been a collective effort by court administration and county judges' office, just some really talented people that work here in the county. And it says, "Come one, come all. Step right up for the most fun around." Carnival theme. The Oasis County Employee Appreciation Summer Event. Corn cups, that was my doing. Raspas, kettle corn, hot dogs, nachos, cotton candy, popcorn, lemonade, and smiles galore. This is all going to take place on Friday, August 23rd from 11:00 to 2:00. I want to make sure it's on all Commissioners' radar. This is really our ability to be able to say thank you to so many. So it reads, "County Judge Barbara Canales and Commissioners would like to show their appreciation to all Oasis County employees for their dedication, hard work, and loyalty to Oasis County." So each employee will be given five tickets and on the 2nd floor atrium, we're going to go around and have this carnival-like atmosphere with food. And I'm really excited to be able to get to say hello and talk to people that I don't, I get to pass by every day, but I don't get a chance often to really sit and visit with them. So I hope that I'll be there for those entire, that entire time, at least back and forth greeting people. But I think this is wonderful and thank you too. It really kind of came out of the Wellness Luncheon Committee who kind of spearheaded it, but if it wasn't for Margaret, none of this would have happened. And thanks to the fellows downstairs at Rico, right?
Rico, yes, and Monica. And it kind of came out of the wellness, but this is not really wellness.
No, nothing about this lineup is wellness.
This is a treat.
Yeah, yeah, let's just make that distinction. There is a committee and then there was the food. But you know what? Once a year, you're entitled to have fun, right?
We can find some lean hot dogs somewhere.
Okay, okay. Anyway, so we're all very excited. I hope you will be too. As department heads, if you're listening, we did it, we created this 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to really allow you the flexibility of being able to work lunch appropriately. Please utilize that as it was really cleverly designed. Same thing for folks that are like, I see Ida here with us that are in Robstown or Port Aransas or The Bluff, you know, anywhere around our county that you're working, we want you to participate too. If we can help you or assist you and you cannot move, I know Sheriff, there might be a lot of people that can't move. Let us have our assistants, you know, come and I'll volunteer to bring a bunch of goodies there, y'all's way. There's people that obviously cannot move even if we give them the flexibility. So just, all you have to do is let us know. But Commissioners, I hope you think that's a great idea. Barbecue's fun, but it's nice to change it up too. So thanks to the creative ladies of the 3rd floor.
Judge, you can have my corn cup. I'll be in a workshop.
I have to sign you up for that comment, sir.
Yes, I just want to remind you, this is public comments.
I already signed him up.
I want to give you my corn cup officially and I'll be in a mental health workshop.
So anyway, it's very important. Okay, so hearing no other public comment, we have a consent agenda that's running from items A through J. And I'm going to pull G only for the purposes of information. And actually, G and H.
And purchasing wants to pull F.
And pull F? And is there any other ones that need attention? Oh, F is a table, okay, hang on.
Yes.
Let's just go ahead and let me finish what I'm doing here. I'll get to that in just a moment. I'm going to pull F either way because in order to do anything there. F, G, and H Commissioners, if not, I'll hear a motion for A, B, C, D, E, I, and J. And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Motion to table F.
I'll need a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll hear from that next week. Michael? Okay, thank you. So that's tabled Clerk Matt Uster to August 14th. Is that correct on the date?
Yes.
Okay. And then on G and H, Michael, come back up and just kind, it's just a good opportunity, Juan, also, this is all about information. I'm supportive, obviously, of both. In fact, we're absolutely desperate for both. We just need, I just think the Commissioners don't often get all the info that I do. Tell us about the generators and the annex and how important it is to get these items to open the annex.
Well, for that, I'm going to let Juan tell us.
Okay, that's fine.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
On the CNI electrical contractor's essence, saw the connections for the temporary generators. The, this is to get the annex, the additional part of the annex building up to, you know, so we can open it up. We're trying to get a temporary COO from the city to be able to get that facility open. So this is one of the items that we do need to get started so we can, the contractor is already ordering the materials for it. So it'll take about four weeks to get the materials and about two days to install.
Okay.
So it is, it's a priority and we do need to get it going.
And again, we have already done our vetting, Juan, with jail standards and they know that a temporary generator is coming so that when they come, they won't be surprised with that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, so we've done all of that background vetting. Does anyone have any questions? I just didn't want you to be concerned as to why we had a temporary, the regular generator is about a four-month lead time?
Yes ma'am, the actual generator will take about four months to be able to order and get it up to us. So it's going to take about four months. By the time we procure it and get it to us, it's going to take about four months.
Right. Everybody, I've got a motion. I've got a second. Is there any further discussion? Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. Thank you all so much.
Does that cover H too? Yes.
It really does, thank you. Or no? Well, actually, no. No, I'm so sorry. That's just G, okay? On H, this is the actual generator, right, Michael?
Right.
You want to tell us?
This is the generator for the...
Annex, the one that takes four months.
Right.
Got it.
This is the other half of what we were just speaking.
And let's just talk about the dollars because again, I want everyone to be 100% transparent here. Dale, you want to address the FEMA dollars there?
We received a grant for this particular generator from FEMA. It was a 75-25 grant where they pay 75% and we matched 25%. Our 25 match is currently allocated to a CO that we have, so the funds are there and available to spend. The FEMA grant is a reimbursement grant, so we have to do the expenses before we get reimbursement. But the grant has been approved and the value has been done through our grants department as well as purchasing to make sure that this all qualifies under the grant.
Great, thank you. And how about for the, I know the temporary was not part of the grant. How do you feel?
It's part of our match. We can go through the same CO that we have for the match portion of it to cover that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move.
And a second?
Second.
And this is for item H. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, now we are through with that. A regular agenda, I've got, the first one I think would be Dale and that's, we're going to receive the calculations of the effective tax rate, rollback rate, and fund balances for some of the entities, including ourselves, Hospital District, and Farm-to-Market. And just as a way of introduction, Carolyn, we've got an opportunity just to, Ernest Garza is here, he's listened in to all of the workshop yesterday. Anything you need to give you backup, we've kind of started collecting, we took really good notes and, so this is going to be a little bit of what we heard yesterday, but take as much time here as you want because these were different, I mean, these are new numbers essentially.
Yes, Your Honor, what we have to do each year under the Texas Tax Code is provide the calculation of the effective tax rate and the maximum rollback rate for Oasis County, which includes the debt service, our farm-to-market lateral road, and we also function as the Hospital District's tax value and approve their rates and the effective rates. How this works, the effective rate is a calculation of property that was on our tax roll last year and this year, the same property is valued and we determine what our levy was last year and we determine the value of the property this year, determine what value we need to have to get those levies similar to being the same. There will never be exactly the same because certain, when we do the balances, the levy increases, decreases based on changes to our values through the Appraisal District sending the information to the tax office. So those values kind of change within the levy before we do the calculation. Then we take the total net taxable value, and which we'll get to that in a second, to determine what our effective rate is. Our effective rate then is what we would use for calculation of this. Now, that calculation does not include new property. New property is an additional funds that would bring in additional money because it was never on the roll in 18 where it will be on 19. So those numbers are excluded in the calculation of the effective rate, but they are included as additional tax revenue as they come in.
In addition, you might point out that the Hospital District is not subject to the abatements.
That's correct.
And so that's why that number looks different.
Yes, if we go to the first page, we'll see our comparison of net taxable value for the general fund. Of course, the general fund also, that's where our debt service resides within that particular fund, with the farm-to-market and then the Hospital District. If we go to the value for our general fund, you'll see in the tax year 2018, our total net taxable value was $27,881,351,285. For this particular year, our current certified value is $30,209,998,175 or an increase of $2,328,664,890 or 8.35%. Now, as you said, the farm-to-market lateral road is also the same, similar on the taxable value with a small change and you want a difference between why the county's at 8.3 and the farm-to-market's at 6.37 is it was under a tax abatement, which means it was a tax-exempt property and it's now converted to a full taxable value, so that now is considered new property. And for our current fiscal year that in 2019, our new property for the general fund was $1.2 billion. So that's why you see the 8.35%. And the difference between the balances for the road fund and is the Hospital District, and still, the Hospital District is $32,105,696,711 for net taxable value and the farm-to-market is $30,219,356,858. So that's the balances what we're talking about to our net taxable value. And we're going to go to the next page where we actually show you how we calculate the effective tax rate. And we're going to start with the general fund. We start with the net taxable value coming up at the balances. We have property that's under dispute currently and we have to value that at a certain level because we don't know whether it's going to be up or down and we use that balance there. And currently, the property under protest was $450,622,223. Part of the balance we have is our railroads that we have in the county. This is not part of the Appraisal District, this comes from the comptroller. We currently have three railroad services within the county and those values are $12,471,110. As we've done in the past, the county has a freeze and we have a freeze ceiling of $1,750,284,206. That gives us a net taxable value, as we said before, $30,209,998,175. We then subtract out some, because we have, currently we have two tax increment finance zones, we have Padre Island and it's downtown at the moment, and that is $520 million to give us a revised total taxable value of $29,689,671,511. Then we subtract out, the new property, as I said, is $1,201,215,170. Then we count the levy that we has before and then we take the levy from the adjusted value to determine what our general fund effective tax rate would be. The general fund effective tax rate for our year starting at 2019 is .295260. Currently following the truth in taxation and the guides under Chapter 26 of the Tax Code, our maximum rollback rate, which is still currently at 8%, is .315337. And that is currently the effective rate and the rollback rate for our general fund, which includes our debt service. The next one we provide for you is the farm-to-market. I'm not going to go through the numbers because they're theoretically the same, the only difference is our new property is $695,994,684. As I said, the abatement was why there is a large difference. For that particular case, our effective rate for the farm-to-market lateral road is .003727. And our maximum rollback rate, again, at 8% is .004025. We also have to provide you the information for our Hospital District to, so you can receive the balances. They do not have a tax freeze and they only participate in a few of our TIF values, so the balances for theirs is a little bit different for the particular reason. However, their currently effective tax rate for the Hospital District is .112421 and our Hospital District maximum rollback rate is .121414. And these are the numbers that we will need to have in our values so we start determining whether we need to do notices for hearings or proposals in case the county decides to go above the effective rate and any possible for budget hearings.
And have you heard, I think they're on our schedule, but we have not heard from the Hospital District Board what their position is.
I know, Judge, I think we have a counter meeting with them on the 12th.
Okay.
With Johnny Hip to come over and go over their budget and try to tell us what their... us what their proposals are.
That's perfect.
We've heard many things about possible increase, possible not, but, but going with what we have and the numbers we have, uh, for their calculation, the effective rate will get them about five-hundred-thousand dollars more.
Five-hundred thousand more?
Yes.
Okay, let me write that down.
Five-hundred thousand more.
And do we have a copy of their budget, proposed budget?
Not yet.
Okay. So all that's gonna happen on the twelfth?
Well, they're gonna come, talk to us on the twelfth and go over their budget with us, and then that's the, that will give us, uh, hearings and stuff that we need to have for, to put them on our, our schedule, 'cause if, if we...
Right.
If we go over the effective rate for either us or the, or the hospital district, we're required to publish notices in the paper.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're still required to publish this effective rate calculation for the hospital district regardless.
Right. Can we get a placeholder, Margaret, Maggie, for the fourteenth, for hospital district presentation? We may not need it. Let's go ahead and get a placeholder. That way they can come and, I don't know if they have a, have had a meeting between now and then, but...
I'm sure they've had several, they should have had several meetings for now to, to bring you a, a, a proposed balance, a, a proposed budget and what they foresee, what their, their needs are.
Okay.
But that is the, uh, calculations for our, our effective rate and maximum rollback rate for the three entities we talked about, Nuasis County, the farm-to-market lateral road, as well as our hospital district, and these are the values that our tax office and, and, and our office will start using for publication of notices should, should it, they be needed.
And just as a reminder, in our budget workshop yesterday, you can now take what you just went over on page fourteen-dash-three.
Yes.
And you can see the actual values that it will yield.
Correct.
Um, from that budget workshop. And I'm kinda just saying that as a reminder to everybody here. So if you wanna see what the, what the effective tax rate yields, that there's something on that, and then there's something on, there's another page that deals with, um...
Yes, for our budget workshop hearings, and we, we have one coming up on Monday, and, and Commissioner Vaughn will get with you, uh, here, uh, very soon, showing you the, the scenarios we've had so far on different calculations. We gave, uh, them information on what the value would be for a taxable value at the effective rate, and with the new property, that's about two-point-six million. And then we have the balances at the maximum rollback rate for the county, and that was somewhere near eight million. And then we gave the evaluations of what our fully funded debt requirements are based on our requirements of our debt services, and that, that rate's going down, and, uh, that's around twelve million dollars for that. And then we gave you the, the maximum rollback rate for the farm-to-market as well as the, the hospital district, so you see those values. And that's, that should be in the package you, you were given.
Okay. So if you leave the effective tax rate the same, you're gonna have an increase.
Yes. We, we, we're gonna, gonna get, uh, uh, two-point-six million more because of the, the, the valuation, small changes as well as new property.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And it fluctuates. What's nice about what he did, um, you'll see that he's got it all the way to what if you leave your tax rate the same?
Yes.
But, you know, you, you can see in between as well. He's got a nice phased system in that, in that packet.
Several, several notes for that. And, and as, as we all are aware, that the Truth and Taxation says that any rate above the effective rate is considered a tax increase, even though we may be lowering our tax rate.
Okay. Thank you.
And that should be received, Your Honor, so, uh...
Thank you.
You showed...
I appreciate that. Are there, um, any questions for Dale? Um, okay, this is a presentation only at this time.
But you, I think you still have to show, you, you actually, a formal receiving of the, the balances.
Motion to receive.
Okay. I've got a motion, and do I have a, I think I heard a second from Commissioner Gonzalez. And all those in favor of acknowledging the receipt of these calculations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The acknowledgement is there. Um, we are now gonna hear from, uh, County Libraries' Department. Ms. Ida, we've got a discussion of operation changes regarding the hours of our Keach and Bishop libraries. You also have commissioners, a, a handout, if you'll look to your right, that talks about the recommendations. And I also have had a chance to visit with Ida at length, and I think you'll find that, uh, it makes good sense. So...
Do you approve?
Let's get a motion and a second, and we'll go into discussion. Okay, motion, and then, got a second. And then please give us the rationale and what the new hours are so that those of us can tell our folks.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners, and, um, thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time to, uh, come and discuss this item on the agenda. And, uh, we've had a, a change in the circulation of, of patrons that are coming into the library, so that's the first one, where, uh, in the evenings, there hasn't been that much activity after, uh, pretty much most of our activities for programming is about three, three-thirty, four o'clock. And so by five and five-thirty, usually everything is, you know, getting quiet. And so usually the staff after six-thirty, it's very quiet in the library. So after seven, it's practically dead. We maybe just have one or two people late hours. And so we are open, uh, Monday through Thursday from ten AM to eight PM. And Fridays and Saturdays were open from ten AM to three PM. And so usually those evening hours are quiet, and that's why, uh, I'm going to suggest that we open at nine-thirty, 'cause most of the patrons are already waiting outside the door, and we're in the building already waiting to, getting ready to open. So that's why I wanted to recommend that we change the hours to at least nine-thirty AM, Monday through Thursday, to six-thirty PM, nine, which is nine hours a day times four, thirty-six hours. And on Fridays and Saturdays, uh, we are open ten to three, so we wanted to change it to nine-thirty as well, so they'll be the same, nine-thirty, and close at two-thirty. So it's five hours times two, ten hours. So we will be changing to forty-six hours instead of our fifty, even though we are moving thirty minutes earlier. So, and I did, uh, call and, uh, confer with the Texas State Libraries to make sure that these changes would not affect our future grants, and they said no, that we are, we're fine, you know, even if it would, it would affect us if we would go under forty hours. And for the Bishop Library, uh, they have been experiencing as well, uh, patrons that aren't there after five o'clock, when usually the buildings are already closed, but we will still remain open at six o'clock. And, uh, we've been trying to make these changes for the past three years for both libraries, but we hadn't, we were still waiting to see if the things would change, which they haven't. It's been, been still, still slow. And, uh, for them, she's only a twenty-hour staff, so this will take away half an hour from, uh, the morning and half an, or, uh, prior to the twelve o'clock or one o'clock opening. And so I'm going to suggest that, um, for her hours right now, they are one to six, five hours times four, twenty hours. And, uh, what I wanna s- suggest for her is to, uh, be open, uh, one to five, and she can get there at twelve-thirty to do the procedures and then stay another half hour to close, closing procedures. And the other, the other, uh, activity that we've had as well is, uh, the auditing. And that, that is a big change that we had never had, and so, uh, this is my twelfth year working for the county, and I, we've always done money handling, but we had never had audits. And so this year was the first time that we had audits at both libraries. And we fared well at the Keach Library, but our, our staff that's at the Bishop Library, uh, hadn't kept up with the monthly log at that time when the auditors went and did their auditing. So we didn't do so well, and, you know, she didn't do her paperwork. So we, I followed through right away and we contacted and spoke to Elva, and we did everything. My staff went back and they did more money handling procedures. And so we're already good, and they even did a, another surprise visit by my staff. And so, you know, we've, we're trying to keep up and do everything, but that half hour prior to opening and half hour after we close will make a big difference to the staff, so they can do the procedures for opening and closing, and do all the money handling procedures, do the paperwork, and have everything in shape. Any questions, comments?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. And the one issue that I was worried about, you helped me address, but I'll, in case anyone's thinking it, we all know that in, in smaller communities, our resource centers, which is what libraries have become, you know, are, are the place where you get the best Wi-Fi. And so you told me that luckily for us, the way our Wi-Fi works, you can literally be in the parking lot and get just as good Wi-Fi, although I always prefer people not doing homework in their cars. Um, the truth is, I think this, these hours make sense, but I would like for you to really watch it.
Yes.
If, if it does get approved today and really come back to us, you know, with a, with a six-month report.
I will.
Because these are best, the story is best told once experience is, is under your belt. And so you've made the determination based on experience, and now you'll need to make another decision whether it was a wise move or not. But, um, and then, of course, if there's any special events.
Yes.
You will make arrangements to be open for those special events.
Yes.
Okay.
Call question.
Any questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's make sure we make those, um, website corrections as well with IT. Okay, we now have a discussion of, from emergency management. I'm guessing, Kathy, do you wanna talk about the burn ban?
Okay. Um, this is our opportunity to consider an order prohibiting outdoor burning in the unincorporated areas. Uh, this is pursuant to section three-five-two-oh-eight-one of the Texas, um, government code.
Do you want Margaret to read the proposition first?
Actually, could you just tell us what the, the index is?
The current index is running from five-hundred to seven-hundred.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the Keach and Byron drought index.
Right.
And that was effective this morning, when I looked at the report.
I, I, every other county I've seen is doing this. I'd make a motion that we do this, and I don't, yeah, let's go.
All the surrounding counties of Nuasis County are currently under a burn ban. Yes, ma'am.
I think that, uh, obviously a, a wise move.
You had us say hello.
So, um, how about, um, I heard a motion from Commissioner Chesney, a second?
Second.
And, go ahead, and here's some discussion.
Uh, Kathy, so, um, then, uh, 'cause I got contacted by the city marshal out in Awolose, uh, yesterday or the day before about this very issue. So you'll contact all our partner agencies within the county and outside the county, let them know that there's this ban.
Yes, sir. I certainly will. All the fire chiefs, uh, were, did confirm that they were in agreement to the burn ban as well.
That's good. Yeah, I was out in Bancati yesterday, so the ESD four was there having a national night out event, and so we were, we were talking about that. And so they, they see it, they know it. I don't know if we've had any really big brush fires around the area. I can't think of any right now.
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Definitely gotta be aware of it and be careful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. And, um, so, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. I think, Margaret, do we, will, will we be signing anything in order or not?
Yes, sir.
It's gonna come around. Okay. All right. And then the next one is the discuss and consider a master service agreement for East Civis, and I'm gonna motion to table. We just, we're so close, but there's one, there's still something that's pending. And so...
Second.
I'm gonna table to August fourteenth. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. We will bring that back. On Public Works, Juan, we have a, a consideration of a, um, change order for County Road Thirty-Five, and you're gonna tell us about that.
Uh, yes, Judge. Uh, we're recommending the, uh, extension time to the contractor, uh, for rain days and, uh, additional material testing that they were requiring. And this is for County Road, uh, Thirty-Five, uh, paving, uh, project, and, uh, we're recommending the extension of the contract.
So moved.
Commissioner, you're, I've got a motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay. And then Commissioner Gonzalez, you're in favor?
Yeah, you know, uh, the extension's okay. We met with them, but we might have to, we might need some more time because I, we don't, we did a walkthrough and I didn't, wasn't very happy with what I saw. But, you know, we might have to, we might have to extend it some more.
Yes, sir. We, we met with the engineer yesterday, and, and he'll be talking to the contractor regarding some of those items we talked about.
Have they already met with the contractor already?
Uh, he'll be, uh, the engineer, OJ, will be coordinating with the contractor. Uh, once they meet, Commissioner will, will let you know when that meeting's gonna...
I know I could be there.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll let you know.
That'd be great. But basically, it's a change order for, um, time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. And then Michael's gonna come back up, and we have an award for an asphalt, uh, road material.
Okay. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Uh, this is the IFB for Asphalt Patch HP Road Material. The contract is to furnish the county with approximately five-hundred tons of asphalt patch HP material for a term of twelve months, uh, with the option to renew for two additional years. Uh, we opened bids on July second. Uh, we received three bids. Uh, one of the bidders provided two locations on their bid. Uh, the, uh, the low bidder at that time was Vulcan Construction Materials. Uh, we had their bid reviewed by Public Works, and the items that they bid, uh, were not per the specifications that we asked for in the bid. Uh, we asked for SCM one oil, uh, which is the oil that combines the material together. Uh, they bid a non-volatile mix, uh, which Juan found to be non-compliant, uh, with the specs. So, uh, he provided a letter, uh, to me for that, and in turn, I notified Vulcan, uh, by, uh, with the notice of intent to award, uh, to give them an opportunity if they wanted to come and speak on their behalf. Um, and, uh, we haven't received any communication from them that they want to come and speak, and, and I don't know if anyone's here from Vulcan right now.
Are we gonna go rebid or what?
No. So, uh, since their bid is found as non-responsive, we can, we cannot consider their bid, and so we go to the next low bidder, which is Asphalt Patch Enterprises Incorporated. Uh, their bid does meet the specifications. Uh, we recommend, uh, award to Asphalt Patch Enterprises Incorporated at the unit price bid per ton of one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and forty cents if the commit, if the, uh, county picks up at their shipping point, and a hundred-and-sixty dollars per ton if they deliver to Nuasis County Airport site or four yard.
And is this...
The good thing about this, the way it's sort of worked out, is that this is a material that the Public Works Department has already been using, and they like the way that it works in wet conditions and in cold conditions. And so...
Is this within the budgeted amount that we anticipated?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it is.
Move to approve Asphalt Patch Enterprises, Inc.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
I think, say, uh, Michael, uh, Juan, when this asphalt, uh, this is, I'm just thinking ahead, right? But, uh, we also gotta start thinking about stockpiling some of this, if it's a good price somewhere, we know, we, we, for, for the, for twenty-twenty?
Uh, Commissioner, I mean, we've, it's good to kinda, on this type of material, just kinda pick it up as needed. I mean, we do stockpile some of it to have it in our store, in our yard, but it's good to kinda bring it in and have a, kinda like a little bit of a backup, but not stockpile a lot of the material, Commissioner. No, you get it, you get it fresh.
But we are gonna need some stockpiles for it.
Yes, sir. We do get some of it stockpiled, but not, not as much. We kinda just, we kinda, we kinda look at it as, as, okay, we, we use X and then we bring in X. We don't wanna, we don't wanna overwhelm ourselves.
Buy everything at one time, when, when the core engineers come down to work on that part.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, well, this is a different type of material, Commissioner. This is for, for potholes. Uh, this is the one we reuse for potholing purposes. Uh, so that's the reason why the specification is real tight. Uh, we do, have used it, and, and again, as Michael said, we've used it previously. Uh, we've been using it for years, and it's worked, worked well. Uh, so that's the reason why we're, we're sticking with this material. In regards to the other material, like your PB four and your PB three, uh, we do have, um, we are getting right now material from another supplier. Uh, we are bringing in some of that material as, as needed, and we're also, on that one, we are stockpiling some of it.
And I did talk to Tex dot, when I was with the urban counties and the representative Tex dot, and he said that he'd be glad to work with us, uh, with the region here to try to give us whatever else they could give us as far as stockpiling.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are, we are, as a matter of fact, uh, jury's been real, um, proactive about that, and our, and our staff. Uh, we are talking to Tex dot as needed. Uh, we are getting whatever, uh, the recycled asphalt. If they do have some, we'll go out there and we'll pick it up. Uh, the same thing with the recycled base. If they do have some recycled base, and if they say, hey, come pick it up, we'll, we'll go out there and pick up the ba, the recycled base. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to the auditors, um, segment here, and we've got a budget change order, and I need to flip to that.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a request for a budget change order number nineteen for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Yes.
Uh, it is a, a two-page request. Uh, the first page, as you see, there's a, a few larger, uh, requests. Uh, Commissioner Corbin's administration is, is requesting a twelve-thousand-dollar change, and that is to pay for the services that, that, uh, Mr. Garza's providing your office and, and their office for budget assistance as well as calculation rates of the, of the tax rates. Uh, the funds were there because the department head that was at the current position was vacant for several months, and so the funds are available for that particular vacant for several months and so the funds are available for that particular event. Down on Department 1570, you see 11,000 change. They have a lot of repairs that they need for replacing fire extinguishers and other deficiencies that they may have and supplies that they might need for that particular purposes. The very bottom of that report, you see for capital outlay, that is the East Civis Services and Maintenance Contract that we will be going through once all the contract information is done. The funds are needed for that particular issue. The rest of the, of the transfer's requests are very small in nature. The funds are available for their needs and we submit this for your approval.
1900, can you explain that one again? What's?
Yes, Department 1900 is paying for the service, maintenance and service agreement for the East Civis software that we just, we just tabled a few minutes ago. This is the cover of the contract services agreement for that. A lot of this is going to be paid for by the main grants. However, we still have a yearly finance due that's required. And they're just setting aside funds to make sure that they have the funds available in 1900 for that.
When we table this other one, is there no relation to this?
Well, we, this, this is just moving the funds for when it's needed. We're not spending the money until it's needed and once the other portion of that you tabled is done, then that, the funds will be there at that time.
Can we do that? Can we table everything else?
We can table this if you like, yes.
You could table it for next time with the other one?
I think so. I think what you need to go and do with it, I'll move to table it.
1900, he was getting the monies in advance, but we can wait till we do everything?
That's fine. Motion to table capital outlay, is that what you want?
Yeah, because we tabled the other one, you have to do with that company.
Okay, and so, but are all the others, let's just name them for the clerk. 1121, 1500, 1570, 1740, and 6310?
Move passage of those.
And I'm sorry, add 0121. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose, same sign. Okay, so the only one that's being tabled in the, in the change order, number 19, is 1900.
Right, we need to go back and table that one because we didn't, I didn't get a second on that and I didn't get a vote.
I think she, he seconded.
Okay, we just need to...
But we'll have to table as a separate item, okay? So, now, all those, well, I've got a motion by Commissioner Chesney, second by JAG, on the table for 1900. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, same sign. Okay, so now we're more organized there. And now we're going to have a financial report for the month.
Yes, but this is for the month of June 30th, 2019, for our fiscal year that we're curving in, that would, you, at least three months remaining of the fiscal year. And so, so this is nine months in. So, we're talking about on page four and five is where we actually talk about our assets liabilities and equity. You'll see, I'll go for the general fund. General fund currently has assets of $52,504,686. We have current liabilities of $10,363,313, giving us a net current fiscal balance of equity of $42,141,373, towards the end of the year that we should get back to our total numbers, pardon me. On pages eight and nine, you'll see some several charts and graphs showing you where we're at position-wise for revenue expenses as well as fund equity. And you'll see that within the last five years, we're still following the same path we have in the, in the past, going from where we are to where we are. So, that's very, very important. On page 10 is where we always come to a point where we get very, very critical on the group health, that's our health insurance fund. Health insurance fund has $2,838,000 worth of assets, $1,588,000 worth of liability. And thank goodness, right now, we have a net position of $1,249,399 showing the balances. Now, if you go through the schedules that we have on the next page, on page 12, you'll actually see our revenue to expense. For this year, our revenue to expense, we've had most of, most of our months, we've been, our revenue exceeded our expenses that you see in the bottom line graph. However, there's been the month of January, March, and May that our expenses have exceeded our balances. And those were for some very, very major claims that we have. We don't really foresee a lot more of these major claims coming, so we feel that the fund will remain strong as it is and there will be no need or requirement of any premium increase for the next fiscal year. When we start going to our budgeted expenses, we start on page 21 and 22, trying to show you which ones that have a small minus position now that doesn't mean they're very, they're wrong, but we just make sure that we show you that they're below our current available funds and we just, we work on the funds at the moment. Again, on page 23, because the county judge, Judge Neal, did not set aside a lot of stuff for telephones and IT improvements, that's why the judge, your balance is slightly over budget, but we expect that and we'll, we'll be taking care of those numbers very soon. On page 31, again, we go to the Broadway Warehouse. The telephone utilities is a little bit on the, on the high side. It's at, we only have $1,373 remain for the fiscal year end, so we need to keep an eye on that and to try to determine why that might be increasing, that maybe the budgeting was, need to be addressed. Again, on page 38, because of have to pay the rent all in advance, the legal aid, the 3200 is at a negative position as well as county court law number five, which we know because of all the cases that he had going through this court. This is usually a case for this particular court and we're trying to address that in the next budget cycle by increasing some of his costs and trying to give him a few more positions possibly to help recover that. On page 41, you'll see that both the 94th District Court and the 115th District Court are both over. And both courts have had some very large capital cases going through them, so that's why they're there. I've been talking with both judges and addressing that. And you'll see also on page 42, the 117th District Court is also in a small position, 117th, excuse me, 117th District Court, and they're the same reason for that. And for the next page on 43, you'll see that the 214th is at a small negative position. And what we're working with there is to make sure we have the proper funding for their balances. The next one to address is on page 52. Currently because of certain overtime and other requirements that have hit the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office is slightly under their available funds, but we're working with his office through the process as well. Also, on page 53, you'll see that the jail is in the same process. A lot of it is because of the overtime and the balances of inmates that we've had has been close to 85 to 95 percent. So, the cost for food has also been slightly increased. The next one I have is on page, that's all the ones that I have for the general fund for, for a negative small position. On page 61, you'll see for the entire general fund, for the month of June, we are at 34 percent remaining of the balances. And that's very good since our, we have only 23, 24 percent left to go the year. On page 84, you see our monthly calculations for P-card transactions that occurred.
Excuse me, Dale, if that trend continues, what do you expect that the fund balance will show?
We expect the fund balance to be anywhere between 21, 21, 22 million dollars. That's an increase of about three, two, three million dollars.
That's good.
That's very good. On page 84, we show you what our P-cards are for, for the, for the month of June. Again, our largest ones are, they switch back and forth each month. This month, our equipment and vehicles is the highest transaction expense. Then grounds for that for a total of $334,579. Just so you know, on page 129 is where we start telling you the transactions by vendor and who we pay the most for, going from the nine months that we've had. And you'll see at the very top that most of our transactions are either for paper or office supplies and our reco copy machines as well as our AT&amp;T cellphone and telephone bills. And that shows you, it goes you from largest to smallest. And the very last page of 164 shows you that for the month of June, nine-month period, we have spent $3,125,541 of expenses through our P-card. And that's, we keep, make sure we have the balances that are there. They have been validated and approved and we submit the monthly finance report for June for your acceptance.
Dale, if we all go back to flip phones, would be helpful?
Uh, no. Most, most, most are.
You didn't leave flip phones. What are you talking about, go back to?
I'm going to send you to this class that I know about. At, they do it at, you know, the Veterans Roundtable? He takes people's flip phones and gives them a smartphone.
For the smartphones.
Move approval of the monthly financial report.
I have one more question. Back on page 53, the Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
It says 22 percent telephones and utilities. Is that their inmate usage or is it just, what's?
No, that, that is our, our cost for the, for the sheriff's office. That's, that's for cell phones and pagers that they have in their office. That's what the correction officers or the sheriff actually uses for that as well as iPads or anything else they may have.
Why is it under them? Why is it red?
Well, because they may have received, if this budget was already set up for and they have now received some new iPhones and new iPads that were not there, some of these iPads require a AirCard for it to be able to be used because they may not have Wi-Fi. And that AirCard costs $40 per month, so it may not have been budgeted for that. So, that it may be additional cost because we now have to provide for that when we didn't have it in the budget to begin with.
So, it's not inmate-related?
No, it's not inmate-related. This is all for the officers or the sheriff as well.
That's why I think this is cheaper.
Dale, compared to previous years on Gulf Coast paper, we spend a lot of money for paper. And we've got new technology with scanning and everything. Is that the norm from previous years? Is it more, is it less?
I'll have to look at the, the numbers for, for that. I can, I can run you a comparison since we've been on our P-card system for a few years. I can try to give you a year-to-year of who our top vendors are. And back when we first started to say that we're going to go paperless environment, our paper cost went up 20 percent.
And is there, do we go out and try and find a cheaper one or are we just?
Yes, I know, I know Michael and his staff, I think we have a bid for, for our office supplies as well as copy paper that, and I'm pretty sure they go through the normal bidding process for that to try to determine the best cost. But sometimes, some things are required. Unfortunately, I would like to go to a portion where I could give you this in a digital version, but the law says they can't. So, I had to print this and this is, you know, 300 pages, nine times.
So, obviously, the law hasn't caught up with technology.
Correct.
Okay, it's just a lot of money to spend on paper.
There's almost a lot of court documents and stuff that the law requires to be printed.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the law has not caught up with our technology and imaging. We've been trying to reduce our costs by scanning and doing some stuff and doing that to also reduce our records retention.
Thank you.
But yes, I will, I will get a year-to-year summary on the top expenses and get that for you, Commissioner.
Thanks. Oh, one other thing. You know, back on, I'm not sure what page it is, it was on the precincts at the beginning. I'd asked this question before on other services and charges.
Yes.
What was other services and charges? And I just noticed that one of the precincts doesn't have it on there, but the rest of them do. Do you remember which?
Yes, I'll, it could be how, how the, it all got put together. Yeah, Precinct 4 doesn't show other services and charges where...
Not picking on anybody, just...
There are very small numbers of what's, that makes up. A lot of it has to do with possible bondings. So, if you have, if your, your court administrator is a certified notary, then there's a notary fee that should maybe be charged there and Commissioner Chesney may not have that, but we'll look in and see why.
Find out, because I can't imagine what mine is. I'm trying to figure out what.
I'll make sure, we'll, we'll give you a list, what's there.
Thank you. Okay. Do we get a motion for the approval? And a second?
Second.
And we've had good discussion. Any other further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose, same sign at this time. It is our will to elect to go into executive session to, as authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. The sections of the Open Meetings Act that authorize are publicly announced. And so, therefore, I announce that Subject 2 Vernon's Texas Codes 551, 071, 072, 073, 074, 745, 76, 086, and 087. The Commissioner's Court does elect to hold an executive session to consult with our attorney including matters relating to litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioner's Court may, in open session, take such action as appropriately deemed necessary and as discussed in executive session. So, at this time, I'll gavel us out at 10:08 a.m. and we will be back after such consultation. Mics are back on at 10:41 a.m. And we are out of executive session and we have no action at this time. And so, I will call upon adjournments and memory and... Commissioner Chesney?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Judge, I have two today. First one is Pedro, Pete Pedraza. He was called home at the age of 71. He was a veteran and lived in Corpus Christi for a great deal of time. His, his daughter, Yvonne Munoz, works for me and wanted to offer our condolences to the Pedraza family on the loss of Mr. Pedraza. Also, Judge, you may have known Edmund Ford Powers. Edmund passed away on August 2nd, 2019. He and his family have lived in Corpus Christi area for many, many years. Grayson Jack Powers are his parents and Jack and Jetty Powers, brother and sister, or brother and sister-in-law and many, many relatives. And so, condolences to the Powers family on the loss of Edmund Ford Powers. Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I also have Mr. Pedraza and my condolences to the family and prayers go out to them, but also have Francisco, Frank Alanis Jr. passed away on August 2nd. He was a member of American J.R. Forum and also a Marine and was part of the teleguard for the American J.R. Forum. So, he will be also missed by his family and prayers and condolences go to the family. Sit.
Commissioner Vaughn? Commissioner Mattis?
Mine would be also Mr. Alanis as well.
And I'm struggling to find the obituary here that I know that I have on my phone, but let me at least state that I have two sadly. One is a family member, Mr. Joe De Leon. Joe, for those of you remember, he had the famous De Leon's Pharmacy for so many years, one of the few pharmacies that would deliver. He was the brother-in-law of Dr. Hiko Garcia, Yolanda's, my Aunt Yolanda's brother. He was 91. He was an incredible member of our community and his children, I think we have everybody coming into town this weekend, Dr. Hector's children, Dr. Hiko's children. Anyway, Joe will always be remembered fondly by all of us. And, and like I said, he was, he was a great pharmacist at a time where there weren't a lot of, you know, folks in the healthcare professional world that were Hispanic. He, he really catered to, to all of us and all the doctors knew him, so. Yes, exactly. So, we're, we're very sad about that loss, but he lived an amazing life. So, it's a celebration this weekend of life. And then the one that I'm upset about that I can't find is Anthony Garza and Elizabeth Garza's mother-in-law, Mrs. Campos, Stella Campos. And I'm, I'm having, let me look one more time here because I... Elizabeth Campos Garza's mother. And she, she died unexpectedly and I'm sorry, I can't find it. I'll try to bring it back for, for next week. But our condolences to the Gattisa family and to the Campos family on a great loss. She was a great, great lady and a very active member also of our community. And with that, hearing no other adjournments and memory of, we are formally adjourned here at 10:45.